It is 7:02 PM on Monday, March 2nd, 2020, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening are board members Paula Cole, Allegra Smieszek, Christine Malik, Tim Paulus, and I am Crystal Brackey. We anticipate Peter Tensing will be joining us shortly. Also at the table Superintendent Unowski and student board member Naomi Ferguson. We will strive to remain focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel as we conduct our meeting this evening. Thank you all for being here with us. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda before us. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I will move the agenda as presented.
A second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Smieszek. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. So we move into the Information and Proposals Non-Auction Items section of the agenda, which this evening contains two items in the superintendent's update, including our annual presentation from Richfield High School. We're very excited to have you all with us tonight. Just want to give advance notice that the next opportunity for public comment will be at our board meeting on Monday, March 16th. And I will now turn things over to Superintendent Unowski.
All right, so this is our monthly hosted, and we are hosted this evening by our team from Richfield High School. One of two presentations within the superintendent update. So before we go into our strategic plan update, I'm excited and pleased to turn things over to Dr. Latanya Daniels and her team from Richfield High School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy Monday.
Happy month.
So our team is before you this evening to share with you an update regarding the high school and the work that we've done thus far and the work that we still have in progress. And so by the end of this presentation, we want to share with you the work that we've done to move the high school forward and the work that is yet in progress in order for us to become a stronger, more equitable high school focused on high achievement for all students. Our agenda includes the following, our priorities. The achievement to date, our continuous improvement priorities for 2019-20, and we will entertain any and all questions you may have to make. So when you think about our priorities, always at the center of the work that we've done at Richfield High School under our administration has always been centered around what is best for all children and high achievements, high rigor, high supports for all students. In accomplishing that, we have been really focusing on instruction and how do we improve instruction to ensure that it's effective for students each day. Again, access to rigorous courses, again, providing support, and differentiating also by providing multiple pathways for students to excel beyond high school. So we have been doing a lot of work. We call this our construction phase or we've been under construction. Yes, Richfield High School had an edifice. Yes, they had structures in place. But we've had to rearrange some things to optimize achievement in the last few years. And so some technical changes that we've made, which many of you have followed along with, have been restructuring our school day, moving from a six-period day to a seven-period day, moving to a later start time, moving from 8:10 to 8:30 as aligned with research and better professional learning communities and collaborative time during the school day. And one thing that's significant is that we've increased supports for students around our social work services as well as our student engagement specialists. These are people who work directly with our students. However, we have got into the mucky-muck of the work, and these are the adaptive changes. And adaptive changes are always difficult changes because they challenge our beliefs, they challenge people's values, they challenge the status quo of what has always, what we've done. And we've been challenging those things and it's been difficult because to challenge those things and transition from what we've always done to what is best for students as aligned to research means that people have lost some things along the way. And I've learned from our great friend Christina Gonzalez that with change is loss. And so there has been loss as we have made these adaptive changes. But some of the adaptive changes that we've made that have really challenged our staff is adapting to common grading practices that I will talk about. Again, increasing instructional effectiveness, aligning to Charlotte Daniels and Daniels and his framework for teaching, but also making sure as we walk through classrooms, we see the four instructional agreements in Richfield High School. Also changing our math curriculum and moving from a math curriculum in which students are just directly instructed to a curriculum in which students are expected to struggle and expected to collaborate and expected to lean on each other for answers. And last but certainly not least, we have been looking at all of our work, all of our practices, our policies, procedures through a lens of equity, which has been difficult work, but the team has been comfortable. Our measures of achievement, some of the metrics have been our attendance, grades, suspensions, the four-year graduation rate, and student registration numbers in rigorous courses. And as we have begun to do this work, one thing that was important to me when I became the principal here was to interview or interview. I actually had 10-minute meetings with each staff member and I also surveyed the staff. And I wanted to know where do I start? Where do I start as a principal to do the work? And about 80% of the responses was, let's look at attendance. And so we have really taken a close look at our attendance and we have begun to unpack what has been the way. Ms. Valli has been a part of the team along with our social worker Marissa Zimmerman to really work on putting attendance interventions in place to ensure that we are reaching out to students that we don't see on a regular basis who have missed classes. In fact, I just had that in my notes a couple of weeks ago. Now that we are about three or four weeks into the semester, let's reach out to students and parents in which we are not seeing in the classes. And so with that work and interventions that have happened on many levels, our average attendance rate is around 93% to 94% each month. We've also seen an increase in our graduation rates. And I want to note that this 76.9% graduation rate is not on my watch. So I just want to make that clear. But this is the trend data over the last four years. And we were hoping to get graduation rate data today about the class of 2019, but that data did not come in. And so we are hoping for good news around that graduation rate. But you're seeing that with the exception of the dip in 2017, our graduation rate continues to improve. Common grading practices. This is a work that our team, our building instructional leadership team, decided to bite off this school year. Last year, we found in conversations as we were doing work in our PLCs that our grading practices were all over the place. And so in our PLCs, the teachers, we aligned our PLC protocol to what should have been happening in classes and structurally around looking at our formative assessment data to determine where our students were in regards to attaining the learning target. And again, we were all over the place. And so one of the charges for our instructional leadership team over last summer was to read data, immerse themselves in data we actually get in the text to read that synthesize all of the best practices and all of the research around grading practices. And from that, come back, we're going to have a conversation and we're going to figure out what we will introduce to the faculty around grading practices for the 2019-20 school year. Mr. Cook was at that meeting, which we, it was his first meeting with the instructional leadership team. And he was very impressed with how ambitious our social leadership team was in biting off this work for this school year. But you see the bullets here, and I just want to say in summation, the change in our grading practices all get back to learning and students remaining engaged in the learning process. Again, this was a huge shift. This was a paradigm shift for teachers. This was a paradigm shift for students. This was a paradigm shift for parents because we all know how we grew up and how we were graded. And so one of the problems or one of the issues that we continue to be faced with was this whole retake process. And students no longer earning zero. And so when we looked at the data, we found, in the research, we found that the larger the range, the more subjectivity, the more bias, the more there was room for perceptive data to impact the students' grades. Also, the research shows that teachers are more likely to get a more favorable grade to students that look like them. And so we have 80% of our faculty being women, being white women. And so that means that white girls receive more favorable grades. So what we wanted to do was to take as much subjectivity out of our grading practices, like our professionalism, effort, attendance, and just focus on what students are capable of doing. And also keeping them engaged in the learning process, which means that you can turn and assign it later. You can retake and assess it if you didn't score what you wanted to score. So it was a switch, it was a change, but we are seeing that it has paid off. This school year, the first semester in comparison to the 2018-19 first semester, we've seen a decrease in our bell in ninth and 10th grade, but we've seen the most significant decrease in 11th and 12th grade. And so our wondering when I presented this information to our building instructional leadership team was, how many retakes did teachers allow in the 11th and 12th grade? Or in my mind, I was thinking, our 11th and 12th grade students, they understand us, they understand how school works. Maybe they found their voice and they're more comfortable in soliciting their teachers to retake an exam. Whereas our students in the 9th and 10th grade, they are still acclimated to the high school experience and maybe struggling to request to take a test. And so we have been working on some strategies behind the scene to make that process less intimidating and less threatening for students. But this is the result of the implementation of our grading practices thus far this school year. Also with, you would think, and this has been the narrative, and I'm going to be very upfront, where people have said, okay, since Latanya has been the principal, we've lowered expectations. We can't fail students. She's only concerned about students graduating from high school. And no, that's not true. First of all, it's not Latanya, it's the team. And furthermore, I'm more focused on, we're focused on students being successful academically. And so as we have really pushed students to remain engaged in learning, because if they remain engaged in learning, they're more likely to attend school. And they're more likely to, if they're more likely to attend school, they're more likely to belong and graduate. And we're seeing a retention in our numbers from ninth grade to 12th grade. So we really want to continue to focus on students learning and being engaged. And with that, we have not seen a dip in our ACT scores. We've actually seen an increase in our average scores across core areas, English, math, reading, and science. It is an upward trend, and our writing scores are up in all ethnic categories in comparison to our state black readers. And so this is something that we're proud of because we really, in fact, just last week, we tested as a whole building, our juniors, for the ACT. And so as we're testing more students, we're still seeing an increase in our scores on an average basis. So I would argue that our expectations are not being lowered. We are not letting students off the hook by giving them a zero or saying, you know what, too bad you didn't turn this in. Keep moving forward and then deciding, I'm not going to come to school. What we've actually done is raised the expectations. And as we've raised expectations, we're raising achievement. And so with that, I'm going to transition to Ms. Valli. She's going to talk about the rigorous courses that we offer at our HHS.
Thanks, Dr. Daniel. So we're going to start by just naming rigorous course offerings, the designators that we use. So one is higher rigor enrollment. Those are our honors courses and our CP courses. You might be wondering why we have both honors and CP. CP comes with sort of a tradition in the science department and the Commission of Education adopted in July a draft of the new K-12 academic science standards. So we're working in partnership with TNL to revise the course sequence in science. And we're actually finding that the CP course, the CP via course that we're running now has a lot of applicability to the new course sequence and the new standards and that that might end up being the course that we offer to all students. So what will our challenge will be is to decide where the honors designation goes within the science trajectory. So of course, giving access to students rigorous coursework in all of the core subject areas leads them, it's our theory, leads them to see themselves in college and schools courses and advanced placement. You are aware, we've put in AP for all in our AP human geo courses in ninth grade. So we're going to share with you just some data on where, thank you, where this is leading us to as far as course offerings and then student success in rigorous courses. So the first thing we wanted to share is the courses that are offered to students here through colleges and schools, through the University of Minnesota. So these are options for students to put on their course registration guides right now. We did want to share with you courses that are not currently offered that other schools might be offering. Introduction to Public Speaking, University of Reading, Intervent Spanish and French, Animal Science, Psychology, and then language courses that we don't offer here. You might be wondering why we don't offer them. There's a couple of different moving pieces as far as offering some CIS courses. There's, the first layer is CIS courses that aren't taking new instructor applications. And then the concurrent enrollment minimum qualifications present a challenge for us. So there was a change in the minimum qualifications for CIS instructors. Now we're, there's different tiers of application based on the course. But generally speaking, the minimum qualifications are asking for a master's degree in the discipline or a graduate degree in the field plus some number of graduate credit hours in the discipline or courses aligned to what the teacher will be teaching. So those present some challenges for us. Currently, the folks that are teaching our courses have some level of grandfathered in and are still working with us to put together professional development plans to continue to increase their skills as instructors. So we also want to make sure we offer a variety of courses for students to choose. So the AP operators are here. Some students choose solely CIS, some choose solely AP. It really allows our students to put together the schedule that best sets them, best sets them up for that 13-plus jump. And so with that, one of our metrics for success as a leadership team is both student enrollment in rigorous courses and the demographics of the rigorous courses. So you'll see our trajectory from 2016 to 2020. Currently, we have 1,860 seats in rigorous courses. So you'll see increased enrollment year to year. What's, some anecdotal data plus student level data, what we're seeing is students taking more than one rigorous course. This is toolkit enrollment, so you could be a student taking five courses and you count for five unique enrollment year list data. I'll show you a graph a little bit later where that is stripped. So right now, this is CIS 1186, yeah, yeah, EP 674 is honors and CP. The stories that our students are telling us are, they're registering for more than one, they're seeing themselves in the coursework. Our teachers are doing a good job making the instruction relevant to them. And then the demographics of the course are representative of that at the school, so they see their peers in courses. And that's leading to some of our increased enrollment. Rigorous course demographic data, we wanted to break this down knowing that we serve our students first and foremost. So our white students make up roughly 39% of the enrollment in rigorous coursework and students of color making up about 61%. And finally, because I enjoy math and so does everyone on this team, we wanted to just break that down by unduplicated numbers by race. So this is a pie chart just showing students unique enrollments and a breakdown of unique enrollments by race. So if you can't see that, this white section here, this is our white students at 244, Latino students at 303, Black African American 131, we have Slivers here also blue, so I apologize for that, but one and two. And then two or more races, 54 students. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Cook to say what is our work ahead.
Good evening. One of my tasks is to work to support our counseling department, Sarah Lindy, Danielle Jaskrow, and Jessica. And going through and working to improve the services that we give to our students, especially how we support them through our counseling department. And as we go through this process and looking at the work that we do, that we do, we've come up with a couple of conclusions. One, people are working hard, especially in the area of supporting students around graduation. But one of the questions that we've had to ask ourselves is, how do we not only work hard, but how do we work systematically and not only helping our students to graduate, but also helping our students to access the resources, especially financial resources that gives our students access to college? And more than that, giving students the support that they need to not only get onto a college campus, but to stay on a college campus. And so some of the work in terms of the redesign that we, work that we, what we're doing with our counseling department is next level work. What do we do? We've worked very hard in terms of improving our graduation rate. What do we do to give our students what they need to get to college and to stay in college and to be successful in college? So basically, the work that our counselors do is data-driven, equity-focused, aligned with ASCA standards. And that means that they work with students with their academic needs, their social, emotional needs, and also their career in college readiness needs. We support our students through, currently through classroom and advisory lessons, workshops, small groups, and also one-to-one. However, when we look at some of our data, some of our data is very troubling. And this is the FAFSA completion rate. And what it shows is basically over the past four years, the percentage of our students who are not only submitting, but completing FAFSA applications has decreased each year over the past four years. This is, this is very significant. One of the things that Dr. Daniels has talked about is that we are, we have improved graduation rates. We have improved our ACT scores. We have increased the number of our students who are taking rigorous courses. And so with that in mind, we have more students who are ready to go to college, who are college-ready. And so the fact that we have fewer students that are completing the FAFSA is very troubling because if students don't have the financial resources, if they don't have the money, and in some cases, if their parents don't have the money, they're not going to go to college. We happen to work at a school where 70% of our students receive free and reduced lunch. So the vast majority of our students are eligible to receive FAFSA. And so one of the things that we have to look at is, how do we meet our students and how do we meet our families and give them what they need? And I'll talk a little bit about what that may look like in a little bit. This represents the top four schools that our students go to. Normandale, U of M, MCTC, Penn State Tech. And one of the trends that it shows is that, and this is self-reported, that students give us this information. And it shows that fewer students are showing up. And again, possible reasons for this to be, students may not have the financial means. So again, how do we, how do we make sure students get the financial aid that they need? It also means that students may need coaching and confidence and support to let them know, to let them know that they have what it takes to be successful in college. And it also suggests that our model of a nine-to-12 model needs to increase to a nine-to-13 year or a bridge year where we have staff who works with our students who go off to college to give them what they need to help them in terms of adjusting in college so that they are, so they are given the support to be successful and to stay in college. That first year of college is very, very difficult. And you're talking to the father and the son who just completed his first year of college. So I know firsthand how tough that first year is and can be. So we just talked to a couple of our students and just wanted to hear some feedback from them. One of our students talked about the need for mental health supports. Another of our students talked about the need for improved relationship with the staff and talked specifically about our counseling. And also another student talked about the need for an additional counselor in terms of being able to give more students the support that they need. And so when we look at what our goals and what our outcomes are, and I said I talked a little bit about this, we are looking to go from more of a passive model of counseling to an intrusive modeling of counseling. What does that mean? It's a long time ago, there was a movie and there was a famous saying, said, if you build it, they will come. And so what I say is, if you build it, they might come. That's passive counseling. Passive counseling, an example of passive counseling might be, we are going to invite our families in to have a FAFSA completion night. Okay? And, okay, that's great to bring our families in and to work with them in terms of filling out our, filling out the FAFSA information. However, when we look at the numbers of our families that are showing up at these evenings in relation to the numbers and percentages of students who will be eligible, one can make the argument that having a FAFSA completion night is not an effective way to support our students in terms of filling out the FAFSA. So one of the things that our counselors, and so let me give you an example of what that might look like in terms of intrusive counseling. One of the things that our counselors are responsible for is registration. And what each of them is responsible for is sitting down with each student and meeting with each student and helping that student to pick classes, to pick the correct classes and to fill out the forms correct so they can enter the classes and students have the classes that they need. It's an intensive process. It takes a lot of time, but our counselors will tell you, it's worth it. And at the end of the process, students have what they need. So what if we did that in terms of FAFSA? What if not only our counselors, what if our counselors work with administrators, work with other support staff, work with teachers in our building, and trained us so that we can train, so we can call students down and work with each and every student to make sure that they fill out FAFSA information? So one of the things, one of the outcomes that we're looking for is, this is about a paradigm shift, a shift in how we do counseling in active giving our students what they need. Some schools, it might be effective to have a FAFSA night and parents will come. We found here at Richfield High School that we don't have the participation that we need to give the students what they need. So we have to change the way that we service our students and our family. So with that in mind, these are our outcomes. We want to see increased FAFSA completion across races and gen. Increase college application rates across races and gen. Increase high school graduation rates. Continue that work across races and gen. We want to look at our advisory model and really make sure that we're giving our students what they need. One of the things that our counselors have been very clear with us about is, this work is not this work is not just about the counselors. This is a school-wide paradigm shift. And everybody needs to, all hands need to be on deck in terms of supporting our students. So this is bigger than just our guidance counselors, our school counselors. This is about the work of all of us as a school. Full embedding of an evidence-based practice model to support students and families around career pathways and college readiness and planning. And again, going back to what I said a minute ago, the development of a cohesive middle school through 13-plus school counseling model. And so this is, again, this is a change of paradigm. But this is work that we are willing to do. This is work that we are going to do, and this is work that I am excited to be part of.
Lastly, we want to talk about our master scheduling process. I know that our process has been of concern. And so we wanted to make sure that we spoke to you all about the process. And so the process this year will be different as the past years because this year there will be a team approach. There will be a team approach to building the master schedule. It will no longer be individuals working in silos or in isolation to create a master schedule. Actually, we will have this whole team of both of our assistant principals in alignment, working on the master schedule. Two counselors working on the master schedule, a representative from our ELO department, a representative from our special ed department, a representative from our DL live department. We will also have our representation from our building instructional leadership team and our operational leadership team to make sure that we are inclusive of teachers' voices as we create the master schedule. And of course, our scheduling secretary will be a part of this process. We strongly believe that 20 eyes or 22 eyes are better than six eyes. And so we are hopeful that we will have a stronger master schedule as a result of this team collaboration. We will also have a clearly delineated process in which we approach the master schedule processes. That's my girl. Carrie is a process person. And so she will make sure the process is tight as we build this master schedule. And the end product is a master schedule that focuses on what our priorities were at the beginning. Inclusive, keeping the needs of our students front and center. We want to keep our core classes around the size of 30 students or less. We want to continue to offer rigorous courses. We want to continue to push and support for those rigorous courses. We want to continue the co-teaching model with our special ed and ELO teachers. Continue to offer support to teachers around POCs and collaboration time. To continue to strengthen our formative assessments. To continue to strengthen our summative assessments. To continue to strengthen the vertical alignment from six to 12 at the high school. And again, to be inclusive of teachers' voices. So though we've come to the end of this presentation, I want you to be very clear that we have not come to the end of the work. The work is still in process. And I am very excited to continue to do this work with the team of leaders I have here, the team of counselors, and the team of staff members I have at Ridgefield High School. And so with that, we remain unequivocally committed to the best for our students. And I will turn it over to you now for questions.
Thank you so much. That was a really exceptional overview in a very short amount of time. Starting with that, thank you, thank you. And thanks to our counseling team for being here with us tonight as well. I know there are going to be a lot of questions and discussions, so we'll open it up.
I'm eager to answer questions, I don't want to step on anyone's toes.
Everyone's just being polite.
All right. I'm going to step right out there. So there's so many things that you mentioned that are just so exciting. And I can see that this is the culmination, Latanya, of a lot of work. And I really thank you personally and your entire team for the dedication and perseverance that I know that's required of you.
Thank you.
And so I want to recognize that upfront.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask probably four or five questions.
Thank you, Ann.
First off, the common grading practices. I just was thrilled to hear you weigh that out. I see so much common sense in what was weighed out. And when you described to me the process by which those were developed, you know, it's this consensus-driven, research-based approach that comes not top-down, but it's coming from sort of within the organization. And it's showing us how when we sort of let our professionals do the work with some guidance and with some high expectations, we get something that looks really good. So first question is, is this implementing for the current school year?
Yes.
Okay. And how is this being communicated to students and parents in terms of, here is a set of expectations that you could have for how grading will occur in your classroom?
So at the first conferences, and I'm sure if I had to talk to my secretary, so what we did, we prepared a letter for the first peer-to-peer conferences around the changes in grading practices. That letter also should have gone home to parents. We also put up signage in each classroom communicating to students what the new grading practices were. Naomi is nodding her head. Because we wanted them to have the language to be able, and the sentences to be able to advocate for themselves. Also, in my presentations to students at the beginning of the school year, I talked about, actually my instructional coach, as well as Ms. Valla, they presented the changes to our students again to inform and empower them around what they had access to this school year. And so I will own that that happened at the beginning of the school year. I have not sent out any communications to parents this second semester. But those are the efforts that we made at the top of the school year to communicate the change to the stakeholders involved.
Excellent. And so I mean, I just want to continue to encourage that, you know, the more we have clarity on these expectations so that not only our staff, but our students and their families all have this common set of expectations around what grading looks like at Ridgefield High School, it's like we're going to get that sort of virtuous feedback cycle of folks being able to hold each other accountable, which is outstanding. I love what you said about the change in mindset around students who are struggling and that students are expected to struggle. Because what I'm hearing there is that we're challenging students. And so we're pushing students. We know that they're going to struggle and we're going to be there to support them.
Absolutely.
Which is fabulous. And I'm just so happy and want to again reiterate my own personal, and I believe, I guess I shouldn't speak on my colleagues' behalf, but I think that the spirit of the board has been pretty clear over time that it's not just you, Latanya. It is the whole community, and it is definitely this board that is behind you in terms of driving these high expectations.
Thank you.
And I am just so happy to hear that you have successfully challenged the myth that failing students is rigor.
Right.
When really what it is, is the easy way out for adults who aren't prepared to support their kids. So, bravo. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The last question I have is, well, I guess this isn't the last one. We've got two more. So first is on the attendance. This is a much more technical question. I feel like low 90s looks pretty darn good, but I don't really know what we would consider to be sort of a benchmark that would tell us that we're hitting, firing on all cylinders when it comes to attendance. Do we have any idea what that would be?
We are striving to hit the board's goal of 95%. That's where we want our students to show up. We are always looking for 100% with the board policy of 95% attendance. And that's what we would love to see consistently every day, all day.
And this is one, again, it's a research. Research says that if students show up 95% of the time, they are more likely to be successful. They will be successful in school. So we're always shooting for that 95%.
Got it. Thank you. So 95 is kind of our target. Have you know that there are...
That is also the no child left behind target. And that is additionally the one we've identified as a vision level nervousity target.
Yeah, and a research-based target. Because of course there are valid reasons that kids have to miss class sometimes. Okay. Second thing here, which is a more technical piece, is, so Ms. Valla, around the, you were talking about CP file and sort of some of the distinctions there and so forth. Help me understand. Okay. So I guess what I was curious about is, why do we need four gradations of rigor? Do we need all those gradations? Or maybe we should say, CP is good? And we can go with that for our introductory file?
So it's intersecting in a couple of different ways. The K-12 science standards adoption is informing how we will sequence, what, 612? So whether or not we need this CP designator or another rigorous course designator, and jump into sciences, not my department. But I'm trying to speak from a science perspective. So we're working with folks from TNL to really think about how we sequence the learning in the science department so that they can still achieve the CIS courses that we're running. So whether or not we need college preparatory or if that adds more confusion to what an honors level course is, is a discussion that's happening right now. I don't think we've arrived at a decision-making point yet because the standards are set for full adoption in the 2023 school year, 2023, 2024 school year. So we have a little bit of a runway. But as far as backwards designing from a high school level course, we want to make sure that we're launching in a way that the MCA aligns to what the student's tested material is. So all of that is a puzzle that we're figuring out in collaboration and partnership with the middle school and certainly with their folks at TNL.
Yep. Okay.
And I would say, I want to add to what Valla mentioned. I will say that in our science department, the least amount of dismantling of tracks has happened. So this is the part that needs the most work around detracking to provide greater access to some of our rigorous courses. That being the CP courses that are in science. And so that has been part of the work that Mr. Cook, along with T. Place and our instructional coach, Megan Stedger, have been leading this school year. It's been a process, but we are going to remain resolute to work through it in order to give more students access to rigorous courses designed.
Okay. So what I think, so to make, to see if I can paraphrase you, what I think I'm hearing is that you're designing with the end goal in mind. So the end goal being getting students to the highest level achievement. Because I was a little afraid that we were saying what we've all, I mean, and I know you said this is not about what we do, what we've always done. But I was a little afraid that we were saying what we've always had honors. We need to keep that in place, but it's not. Okay. Good. Thank you. Thanks very much. I'm done.
So soon?
I know.
I wanted to say that almost every school says that they have a culture of high expectations and want equitable achievement for all. But then you don't see a paradigm shift. You don't see every piece of the work aligned to that mission. And I just saw that over and over and over again in what you presented today. And I'm so impressed with the common grading practices. The AP and potentially CP for all is really impressive, and that takes so much work. So thank you for that. I also have heard from student presenters to the board and our student board members, as well as just the children of neighbors, about wanting increased support for college with counselors and with the FAFSA. So I just think, you know, the data is disappointing when you see the increase for enrollment for rigorous courses and ACTs and graduation. But you clearly identified that right away, that conflict. And I think that's really responsive to student needs and to data. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that impacts our numbers.
Speaking of FAFSA, I have a lot of things in my head about everything, but something's come to mind as a fairly recent student myself doing FAFSA. Especially when you have to do your parents' income as opposed to when I went to grad school where it was just me. So I'm curious to know what considerations have been given to support students in maybe collecting the data they need to bring from their home, especially when there's undocumented parents whose income is not reported in a traditional tax form. And also finding now, you know, dates of birth for some people who don't have parents at home or maybe one even lives in another country. Because I think we know how overwhelming that form can be, but I don't know if there's like a, kind of like that O2 template that we do for our salary, but not for FAFSA, where you can collect some information at home so that when they come to school, they kind of go for it. Because, you know, they have the technology knowledge to go through the form. But there's so many things about income and parents' information and choosing school codes who to send these to. So it's really, and I'm worried that, while I would think in an ideal world it would be great that counselors are doing this one-on-one and we're adopting this child, you know, for however minutes, there's a lot of students at the high school. So I want to make sure that whatever we do doesn't get, doesn't stop because of not having the human capacity to do it. And then as a final thing, as you think about it, I am happy to come and help the kids. I was a college possible, whatever they call now, but yeah. So it's always great to see with high schoolers saying how they think about college and all that.
As we put together this information, and I'm just going to be very honest, I wanted to say there's no excuse for the decline in the FAFSA information. And so the concerns that you raised are very valid. And so as we change this work, we want to make sure that we are intentional in working with our families and being sensitive to the needs of our families so that we can get the information that we need, so students can get the aid that they need. And so as we change the work that we do, especially around the FAFSA, we would appreciate any kind of feedback that you can have and any advice that you have to offer so that we can better work with our families.
And we are also working with Christina Gonzalez, who is actually the director of student support services. And she is aware, and our counselors are aware, of workarounds. Because what I hear is, yes, we need to put a process in place, but within that process, we need to streamline it. That's what I hear you saying. How do we streamline this process with parents and say, if you bring this, this is what we will be able to accomplish tonight? And there are workarounds, the social security number. There are workarounds, the salary information. And so we are working with as many resources as possible to continue to identify the workarounds, but also to create a system within the system to make this a more efficient, yet effective process for our parents. And so we are building the plane as we fly it, but we're committed to figuring out what we need to do with the paperwork to meet our students and parents where they are. The research shows that if the students complete the FAFSA, they are more likely to show up on campus and persevere through their first year of college. And so our goal is to do the work to help them see themselves on a college campus by completing this paperwork so they have to step on their campus. So we just have to do what we have to do.
Do we have big dreams to follow this up on?
At some level, yeah. We have our Girl Scouts. They take students on field trips. I think students that are in CIS courses, they visit the University of Minnesota annually. However, we have this brilliant idea that I have pitched to people who are loving the district, that next year, while our juniors are taking the ACT, I would love, we would love for the building to be empty. love, we would love for the building to be empty, to possibly have a digital learning day, or to have opportunities for our students to visit college campuses, to experience, to experience that, and to begin to develop a college-going activity to help aid with that, that process. So hopefully our dream comes to life next year.
I'm very promising idea. Good luck.
That was a pretty solid.
Just so we're all on the same page, that brilliant recommendation Dr. Daniels was told, all you have to do is plan these activities for the students, and you're welcome to have only 11 graders in the building as you look towards that day next year. I look forward to you doing that work.
Okay, so this side of the table has gone, now we'll turn our attention to this side, including of course, our high school representative Naomi.
Oh, really? Okay. So I had a question about the implementation of the CPM curriculum. So like, I think like the whole collaborative learning thing is really good, but I'm in honors free calculus, like that's where it's been like starting. And a lot of students feel like they're given a task and told to run with something they know nothing about. And like, I feel like that could be a good thing, but also sometimes not a good thing. So like, what do you say to that?
Carrie, you want to talk about the meaning of this? So that's called productive struggle. That's what, that's what it's called. And so we have been hearing this across the board from students, from parents, because again, you have, so you're in, Naomi, you said you're in honors advanced calculus?
No, honors free calculus.
Honors free calculus. So you are a brilliant math student, right? And so you've been accelerated to this course, and so you've probably never struggled in math. So to struggle in math challenges your identity as a math student. And so we have been working with CPM to develop some strategies to help our teachers support you all during the struggle. And I'm going to let this Valla talk.
So you articulated the struggle. So we're switching from, right, to, from replicating a process that a teacher runs through, right, that's traditional math, to this more rigorous, more collaborative, which you've experienced. And that tipping point between productive and unproductive struggle is the magic, right? So we want our teachers to feel comfortable gauging the work that's happening in groups because we do know learning is collaborative. So we're switching to a curriculum that really asks you to do the work of a mathematician, to recognize patterns, to create relationships, to be able to represent data in different ways. And it's challenging folks to think differently about how they experience math. And it is our hope that everyone sees themselves as an access point into whatever math is put in front of them so that they understand that math is just a series of patterns. You just have to find out the pattern recognition and the relationship between things. Rather than our traditional, and I taught this way too, of as a math teacher, right?
And learned this way.
And learned this way. So it's a complete, we talk about paradigm shift. It's a paradigm shift in how we learn math here. And it is, it's our hope that folks that haven't struggled before understand where struggle is so that you can embrace you as a mathematician, because mathematicians solve problems that we don't have answers to. So we want you to equip yourself with all of the knowledge and skills that you have in high school to be successful in college, and then to go solve some of life's unsolvable problems because we're going to turn it all over to you, right? And you'll have then the skills to say, I know how to sort of approach this. I know how to put these theorems together, rather than I sat in this class and I can replicate a process. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can I ask a follow-up question to Naomi and Tor and Valla? Is that being explained to students so that they actually know that that is why?
I feel like I want to go and explain that to my, like, classmates.
Beautiful. So if it's not being explained in that way, I want to support teachers that explain it that way. I want to support students in accessing math that way. And as we know, when we make paradigm shifts, the messy middle is kind of where we're at right now. So Dr. Daniels referenced us working with folks, the trainers from CPM, which is the people we're leaning on for professional development. And also, we have, so I get to put my foot back into math, which makes me happy, to be able to coach and support our teachers. We have our instructional coach doing coaching cycles with teachers, so thinking about instructional skills of our staff members to make this shift. And you're right, sometimes we as teachers don't do the best job of communicating why we're doing what we're doing to students, right? So this is the, this is why I'm doing this, this is why I'm making this shift, I think is, is a valid point that our teachers should be saying, this is why we're doing what we're doing. So I can put rigorous problems in front of you and you can use your power to solve them.
I want to point out the middle school did have a math night at least once, or not this year, but prior year I went to it when, when my daughter was in seventh grade and switched to the CPM math. Anyway, and I'd seen this 20 years ago in graduate school when we switched calculus text, what we're teaching. And so, and the underlying struggle of students, those who have, who are grounded in a history of being good at math, and that's part of their identity, and part of what they identify math as, as sort of a recipe and symbol manipulation, when in fact, it's problem solving, like Carrie had said, and it's, it's a process. And I don't care if you can manipulate the symbols if you have no understanding of what you're doing. You're not really good at math, in a math sense. So that's, that's a different thing in that I don't know if it's been explained clearly to students. And because it would take time, it would take a lot of class time to get them to, to understand that, I think, but.
And Dr. Roby, last week, the curriculum advisory meeting, we, Dr. Roby intentionally invited parents to be a part of the conversation around CPM.
You didn't ask my wife, did you? You would still be there.
Yeah, Karen raises great questions, and I think that, to your point, Director Paul, we need to expose again, parents to the math so they understand the why as well, the why and the what. And so that is a goal of, of this team.
Naomi, did you have more questions?
Yeah, it's good. I think that like finding the perfect middle is like our goal, and I can see like you guys are working really hard on it, so, yeah.
Did you have more?
More questions?
Yes.
Pete had like 10.
So, okay.
Can I go back a few slides? I just want to understand, make sure I was reading them correctly. The failure slide, the number of failures.
Sure, sure.
And so if I'm reading it, I think if I'm reading it correctly, um, we, the same cohort of students goes diagonally down to the right. Last year's ninth graders were 129 and this year are 147, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so I think it's one of the, you pointed out, or you remarked, that the upperclassmen, those who've been in the building a couple of years, seem to have done a better job of, at availing themselves of, perhaps, of, of the opportunities to, you know, recover some credit and advocate for themselves. And this sort of gets to what Mr. Cook had said, the, this sort of passive opportunity where, you know, they don't feel fully empowered yet, I guess, as freshmen and sophomores to figure out, they don't know what they're capable of. And the upperclassmen seem to have found that, that opportunity to advocate for themselves. I mean, we hear that a lot from students, for those of us who went to the student presentations, and I know we had a couple last week, there's a lot of them that seem to present needs and wants from what their school experience that we firmly believe and are pretty darn sure are already here. And with their hiding in plain sight, and the students aren't aware of them. And so our ability, you know, it's, it's in the handbook. It gets mentioned once in a while. And our ability to advocate, I like how you worded it, be as, you know, as intrusive as possible, you know, politely, is, until, until they understand what we're getting at. I don't want to linger too long on this slide, but I do, I do want to say, for the cynics in the world who argue that we don't fail anyone, unfortunately, we do. And, and so we'd have to believe if the cynics were right, we're firing a lot of people over this because we can't fail people, when in fact, we do. And so I, to what Peter had said, I appreciate the sentiment that we've asked the adults who are paid to be there to support the kids because that's part of what we want to do. So thank you, thank you for going back to that slide. Could you go to the slide on the rigorous course numbers?
Sure.
Because there was, I think the first big jump, I think, is explained, oh, that one, please. The first big jump from 772, that's, I believe that was the year of the AP geography.
That was the first year of the, of seventh period day implementation.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And so then that, that, there's a lot to explain, the seventh period day, and then that's sort of prior to that, that we were in a different paradigm of sorts. So it's great, that jump was, was awesome, and it's, it's nice to see. So is there something that explains this year's jump?
What we attributed to is, again, going back to, there, I mean, there is power, I've, I've said this before, I've said this in management team meetings, I've said this to faculty, and I'll say it again now, probably we said it last year, here, there is power in being seen. There is power in being invited and welcomed into a course and, or welcomed into this place. And I remember last year sharing a story that a student had said to me that once they did show up in their CIS class, a student asked them, what are you doing here? Well, that student was Diane. And now she's a student, I mean, she's not here, but she's a student rep from the board. And so there is power in being seen, there's power in being welcomed in the space, and then there's power in feeling a sense of belonging when you're actually in the space. And so we believe that students, in fact, we've heard this from our students that are on the safety support schools committee, they felt like if it was any way possible, and Director Brackey and Director Malley were, they were in that meeting that day, they felt like if there was any way possible for rigorous courses to even go down to the middle school level, let's open up the floodgates and open up the doors and allow students to walk through those doors. Because the students that are seniors and juniors that are in these courses, they're just having such a dramatically different experience. And I believe the word is out about what the experience is in these CIS and AP courses. That is what we believe, um, that that's how I can explain it right now, given my conversations with students and looking at the numbers.
I suppose if I piece my thoughts together better, I might suggest that the students who were exposed to the AP geography as freshmen, two years who are now upperclassmen and have the opportunity and the comfort, or the belief that they can, they can pull it off as they look at the, as the opportunities for CIS and AP courses expand greatly at that, at that end of the building.
And one would, one would just kind of be optimistic, I mean, like you say, Tim, that that 17, 18 jump, you know, that's a little technical structural piece.
Yes.
That we put in place, but as the culture shifts and as the intrusive proactive counseling model takes hold, and as a lot of the changes that the middle school team has told us about take hold, I'm optimistic that we'll see more students entering as freshmen eager and, you know, really, you know, being ready to partner and push themselves, get into that, so, yeah, optimistic.
And the only thing that I'm a little cautious on is how we've defined rigorous courses and how, how the notion of what is honors and what is CP. I think it has sprawled a little more than, you know, going back a number of years. Six years ago, we had, we had a big argument here about what, how to treat AP and PSEO courses in terms of value and GPA. And, and in the ensuing six years, I think we've built up a lot of the course catalog that includes many, many, many more courses qualifying for honors. And so I want to make sure that if we're offering honors and calling a course rigorous, we're not creating a circle where we are, we are manipulating, or, or, not, I don't want to say manipulating, but engineering our own success just by declaring that is a rigorous course. But I can do the reading on that. I'll come back.
And so while we're on this slide, can I, I would be interested down, in the future, to hear about how the students, how students are doing in those courses? Because enrollment in an AP CIS course doesn't ensure success. And I know we have really great supports with our support classes and things like that. And I know that first year with the AP human geography was a bumpy year for a lot of people. It seems to have been worth the bumps and the students are doing really well. But I would be interested to hear how they're, how they're doing in those courses and how the new ninth graders, when they come in, are doing in that, those AP courses, that AP course now that it's been in place for a few years.
Yes.
And then another thing that we asked three years ago, but I don't think we've seen for some time is, is how many students that take these, the AP course, take the exam and actually earn the credit?
Right. And I will acknowledge in front right now that at the beginning of the school year, we met with all of our AP teachers because we, we looked at our AP results, I think Jessica, of course, takes the AP exam in our building. And we looked at our results and we were not happy. We were not happy with the percentage of students who scored a three or higher to earn college credit. And so we met with AP teachers at the beginning of the year to talk about the results and to begin to do some work to, to align and strengthen our AP courses in that AP cohort of teachers, since it's a smaller cohort, in order to improve outcomes. Right now, the tightest alignment, I would say, is with the AP human geo teachers. We have resources that are readily available with them, to them with the text, with the apps that are also available for students to study from. And that is a team of teachers that work in close proximity with each other, and they ping off each other great ideas to teach students high-level, highly rigorous lessons. But I will openly acknowledge and admit that there is plenty of opportunity for us to grow in improving our results in AP.
But the CIS from, from the reports we give periodically and not loudly or frequently enough, that our students earn an inordinate number of credits.
Yes.
Yes.
And we really should be better at taking every opportunity to mention that.
Yeah, I know he's meant to minimize like how far we've come. I know, knowing a bunch of kids that have graduated in the past few years that have gone off to college with two years of college done when they walk in the doors freshman, and it's kind of, it's amazing to see how, how supportive that has been for a lot of our kids in the past six years. I didn't want to interrupt your line of questions.
Oh, no, I only had three. Thank you.
Okay, I'll continue then. So as far as the productive struggle, I love that. And as someone that teaches at the college level, I am so happy to hear that you're doing something here because it's, it's a struggle with college students to, to get them to realize that it's not the grade, it's not how you did on the exam, it's what you've learned from it, and, you know, that you're going to be able to go out in the world and do this job because now you know how to do it because you learned the work. So the focus on actually learning the, learning the material over grades or the changes in the grading practice so that you're focusing on the learning and not something else, or homework, or you didn't turn it in on time, you know, life gets in the way, and that will always be that way. But focusing on that they do the work and they learn the material is kind of where, where you want to go. That is great to see. I have a quick question about attendance. So how do we factor in students? You know, there's, there's a lot of kids out there now with mental health concerns and anxiety and things like that. How do they factor into the attendance role? Because I know from personal experience, there are times when a kid just cannot get themselves, cannot go to school. And going wouldn't be a benefit to them on certain days anyway. So how do they, how does that factor in? Is it, is it a, is it an exception, or does that count as a?
That is, that's counting the data. So absent students, absent students regardless of.
Doesn't matter why they're absent?
Nope. So we try and get it holistically to get a gauge on where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah. So absent is absent and discount.
That is genuine, okay. And so when you talk about CIS and the teachers that are grandfathered in, how long is that, how long are they grandfathered? How much time do they have to get to where they're expected to be before they wouldn't be allowed to teach the course?
I can't confidently say that because I don't think we've gotten, but I can look into it, but I do know their, their, the Higher Learning Commission is, has a draft out. But I don't, I can't confidently say how long we have, but that's information we can look into with our governors at the university.
But I know we're not the only district.
Yeah. We're in our way to do that by any means. Yeah, we will, we will be in the same.
We may actually be in a better situation. I remember when it came up a couple of years ago, it's really how the broader state where they really struggled. We were fortunate, we had an abundantly talented and educated staff, and they just might have been just short of some of the newer, the newer requirements. But as you go out into greater Minnesota, there was not that abundance, and someone was not in the building next door.
Yeah. So next question is about the college application data. So I guess I'd be, so I'm looking at the only. So, I guess I'd be, so, I'm looking at the only four colleges, all local, and we get all of this information from students that give us the information. Is there any effort to get something more in depth? Like, I know, well, for one, kids often apply to more than one college.
Yes.
And there probably is, this is probably a lot of our kids in the local colleges, but I just, I know lots of kids that go to lots of different colleges way, way beyond all of these and, and some that are kind of common, like, a lot, a bunch of kids go to Madison. Do we, are we kind of working to get more of that data or was this just kind of a general?
I'm going to let Daniel speak to it.
Yep. So, come up to the microphone so that the video can capture. Thank you.
So, what we pulled, this is just the top four of where our students are applying and then actually matriculating to. So, we can pull data from 2006 or '07. The historical data that we have goes from 2007 all the way to the class of 2019. We don't have the official class of 2020 data in there yet in terms of where students are going and applying. You're absolutely right, the list is a lot broader. When we looked at the top 10, nine of those 10 colleges were within kind of the region, the area. Augsburg's one of the top that's in there, St. Kate's is one of the top, St. Thomas is in there, UW Leclair, Madison. So there are definitely, those colleges are represented in there. Regarding the student reported data, it's kind of tricky. So one of the things we do is we ask students where they are planning to go so we can send their final transcript. That's a critical piece for them to actually be able to enroll. They have to have that graduation date listed on there. Some colleges will send back information to us and say, "These are the outcomes of your applications." But actually, there's this, with the FERPA, the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act, we don't always get that information. So we really do rely on students to do the outcomes. This data feeds something called scattergrams within our Naviance account. So when we start talking about, to students what kind of colleges they're looking at, we're really looking, moving towards the conversation around fit and match. And the data there tells the historical acceptance rates and enrollment data for our students so they can kind of see kids who have a similar experience as me and have similar access to the programs that I have access to, what are their outcomes there? So that is, that is something that we look at.
Thank you. Thanks. So the other thing with the call, guidance for career and college readiness that I'm curious about is something in these social studies presentations that I've been going to for like four years. And there's kind of a consistent message that we're hearing about not having as, as much information as, and not having it early enough. And I'm not thinking like middle school, but having kids, so certain, you know, certain, there are certain benefits to applying for, doing an early application. So if you apply in your junior year, you can get preferential admittance and things like that and opportunities for scholarships. So, kind of getting that information out so that parents are getting it at the start of the junior year instead of in the senior year. Because then in the junior year, they can visit colleges, but also just, I didn't even know anything about that. I learned about that from just a French as kids were going, who knew about it. So, there are just, I think there's more information that could get out there earlier for our families. And then, I think really, I'm, do you, have you guys, I know Latony, I'm sure that you have seen the presentations and everything, but I think there were a lot of good ideas. I feel like in what we listened to in those, so, and, and there from the students that are kind of living the life. And so, I think it will be great if going forward, we could use some of that, some of those presentations and that information from our students. And then turn around next year and say, as the students next year are preparing to do this, say, "Here are some things we heard from students last year and this is what we've done. So what you're going to spend your time on in this and present is really, it can make a difference." Showing them that what they're hearing.
Voice of that.
Yeah, I think that could be like a huge benefit.
Absolutely.
Going forward. Because it is, they really have, they have some great ideas, so it's kind of exciting. But it, and I will say, from everything you've presented, I feel like it's really on the right track. Like, you, you have to be listening to be on this track right now. And it is very impressive. So, I really appreciate the complete overview and a lot of my questions were answered right within it before I gave them.
One challenge, one challenge for the team moving into next year is to think about as we are trying to make SMART goals, which would include sort of that right metric. And obviously, we're, we have, we kind of focused tonight on four-year college, but knowing that four-year college is not for everybody. We're working hard to expand access to high-quality career and tech pathways. So it would be great to see that holistically. And, you know, I just think about, what seems to me to be this theme that I've heard from our students so often is that they are, you know, they're looking for their experience at Richfield High School to be one that they feel prepares them for their life, whatever that life is, needs to be for that person. And I'm just so excited about, you know, with some of the work that is starting in the middle school to get kids starting thinking about this in eighth grade and ninth grade about where do I see myself in three, four, five years? And so maybe if we could have some sense of when students are graduating, are they feeling like, yes, I have accomplished my goal with what I tried, was setting for myself at Richfield High School?
That's the point. Oh, yeah. I just want to say thank you for like pushing our students and like seeing the value in the higher standards, higher expectations because like, I was part of like the freshman group that was like pushed into AP geography. And I felt like, it kind of like taught me that there's endless possibilities to like what level I can succeed at. And that was like really important to us, so, yeah.
That's the point. Thank you.
And as always, Naomi just comes through with like the right thing. You, you play such a critical role for us in these meetings, so thank you. And I, I feel like my questions and comments, 99.9, have already been echoed by other people at the table and you've been up here for more than an hour, so want to, it's gone fast.
Whoa, okay.
I just, yeah. I, I just want to echo the appreciation and the clarity with which you all are approaching your charge and I think our commitment collectively to our students and to our community. And one of the things that I remember so clearly from a student presentation this fall was a group that was sort of grappling with the question of, what would it feel like to feel confident when we leave Richfield High School for whatever our future is and for what we want it to be for ourselves? And I just think staying centered on that and what can all of us be doing through counseling, through scheduling, middle school through 13, I love that. I'm so excited to see more of what that can entail. Just feels like the right thing for us to stay focused on. And so, I appreciate you all and the team that's here that's going to help us really figure out what does that look like into the future. And I think hopefully you're hearing a lot of enthusiasm and commitment to doing what we need to do to ensure that you all have what you need to do that work.
Thank you. Thank you also.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so one inch in, the item in.
But we knew that was going to happen. We summed it up on the front end.
Absolutely. I'm going to pick up the speed a little bit. This will be our third sharing, a process update in regard to strategic planning. So much of this are things that you have seen, how strategic plan Richfield realized. We have our next large group meeting on March 19th. As a reminder, we continue to gather input and feedback, both for large group meetings and additional input, and we are beginning the process of just beginning to synthesize. Now we are moving towards, this is the first change, breaking out into six groups to talk about strategy areas, or these will be our specific strategies and things that we have been talking about and continuing with our committees and advisories and monthly management teams to further define input things together. You'll note a change in how the agendas have played out. The presentation has been shorter than 30 minutes, more like 20. We've had some form or not a large report back, and so we've had more focus on having people engaged and engaged in dialogue and conversation around what is our strategies and what are the things that we need to give feedback and input towards. Again, a reminder of our mission, of our brand and the things that we are trying to accomplish as a school district. I'm proud to tell you that as of February 26th, when we loaded the board packet, we have 846 comments from 424 people. And we additionally have 35 or more meetings that have been held with over 700 attendees at this time. And so we are continuing to, again, do everything that we can to gather as wide-ranging of feedback as possible. Within the large group presentation, there are synthesized themes, and this is the themes themselves. There are additional comments that are then going to be received as we continue to move forward to really get into the details and put those things together. So when we are working on strategies, we're not just going to see pre-K, we're talking about continuing to offer that to all of our constituents, making sure we have a live curriculum, some of the additional comments that have been given in pre-K, class size, special ed, and some of those other areas. And so, as we meet on the 19th, we're going to walk through each of the six areas that have been synthesized into themes, but look at those comments and further define and really start to talk about what are some of the things we should definitely be focusing on over the next five years of Richfield Public Schools. We'll continue that process on through the coming months with the strategic plan presented to the board in June. So with that, the only other update to share is, is that we are training, as we have been doing, we're training our management team on March 10th to continue on holding additional meetings and begin talking strategies with each of their constituency groups. So in January and February, constituents groups have just given random and overall feedback. Now we're going to talk in each of those groups as we go out to the special ed advisory, for example, or activities advisory, and really talk about strategies and giving more feedback in each of those specified areas. With that, I will open it up for questions.
I have a question, which is, I would love to know more about opportunities that specifically exist for students, and not just at the high school, but across all of our schools. Because I think there are different age-appropriate ways to get student input on what we should be focused on in the district. And then also staff. Because the community meetings that we've had, I know have had some students and some staff present, but I'm curious what we're doing to specifically engage students and staff in the process, especially as we start to get more focused and more specific.
So a couple of things specifically, each staff in terms of those 35 additional meetings, principals are leading staff meetings with all of our staff in that regard, and then department leads are also doing that with their department. So all staff are being pushed towards having an opportunity for voice. In terms of our building leaders, we have what's called a technical committee and they meet once every other, once every other week. And Dr. Clarkson holds those meetings and has been rolling out a strategy to gather input from our students. So, Dr. Clarkson?
So, just so you know that, we have met individually with all of the different principals and every principal has a process by which they are going to engage student voice. We are working on developing some developmentally appropriate ways to engage our elementary schools, elementary students. So, we'll be working with the social workers and Christina to help develop that process. And then at the middle school, I believe, I know that date is already scheduled, I believe it's in April, where we will have a large group of about 40 students that will be providing some feedback. So every building has a plan to gather student voice.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Anything else?
Luke Ott. Okay, seeing none. You have some commendations.
Ah, yes, we do. I have a couple of letters in front of me, just making sure I have them set. All right, so, Luke Ott, when you see the letter in our board packet, I was asked, as would be surprised, by Luke Ott's family, to write a letter of commendation for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, which on very few scouts, I believe only 4% ever achieved that rank. We as a school district are particularly proud of Mr. Ott. He was actually here at our last meeting talking about student voice. One exciting thing about Luke was his specific service project, reading emergency bags for a woman's shelter, supporting women in need, providing blankets and personal care items, and showing his true understanding and service to the community. He also is very helpful at home, supporting his mom, who has some additional needs that Luke has been very, very generous in caring for his mom at home and also in the community. And so we're very proud of Luke, who shows the positive values, vision, and professionalism that we need in our future of our community to lead our world forward. We commend Luke for his outstanding community service and his achievement of the Eagle Scout. We also want to commend teacher Omar McMillan, who is currently a semifinalist in the 2020 Minnesota Teacher of the Year program. And so there are 136 educators who are in the program. There are only 36 semifinalists. At the end of March, they will be reducing things down to the top 10 and finalists. And so we are proud of our own, homegrown Mr. Omar McMillan. We know he is one of our many Teachers of the Year in Richfield Public Schools, and we are hopeful that he will be recognized as such by the state of Minnesota. So congratulations, Mr. Omar McMillan. And then also, we want to send a commendation that was sent to us out by the team at RCEP to specific to Mark Peterson and Randall McMeacon. And they wanted to acknowledge the hard work and ongoing service of Mark, their new delivery person. And they also appreciate the longtime service of Randy, who's the former food delivery driver. RCEP truly appreciates the work of their food delivery team, making sure that the students are supported and well-fed. So they're really wanting to send those commendations out to Mark and Randall. So congratulations to Luke, Omar, Mark, and Randall.
Always wonderful to have commendations. I love the rage that we have this evening.
Yeah.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. If there is an item that somebody would like to remove for individual consideration, that could be suggested at this time. If not, we could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Paulus. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. So we move into all business. We have several items before us this evening, first of which is a second read of what I expect will be several on existing board policy 502 related to resident and non-resident student enrollment.
Yes, so while we typically try to shoot for three reads, this one is going to take a few more. You'll notice in your header page, we've actually removed guideline 502, 503, and 504. 502.2 is a state form and obviously not necessarily for our, not necessarily for our state guidelines. We also eliminated 502.3 and 502.4 because non-resident enrollment through inter-district transfer, specific to our district, is a district that takes achievement and integration grant dollars. We're a district that without specific board action, remains open to open enrollment. And so the generalized rules for inter-district transfer do not fully apply to us. Rules of open enrollment in line with achievement and integration are the ones that do apply. So we did begin working our way through the policy and recognize there are significant changes that will have to obviously continue. We did make some updates in terms of the language around residents of homeless students, making sure that all of our students who are experiencing housing instability are being served effectively by our district. We also are continuing to update and clarify the reasons why, which are a very small set that students may be denied the opportunity to enroll or open enroll within our district. We're working to clarify the application process, to add in with regard to a lottery, should there actually be a lottery, and then also adding lottery process in regard to pre-K. You'll also notice a pretty significant set of things that have been removed from the overall policy as we work to update this towards, towards the 2019 open enrollment updated guidelines and rules from the state. So with that, you were seeing again, rewrite number one. You were going to see transformation and rewrite number two. So we'll probably end up with again four reads because we do want to have an additional rewrite prior to having our, our general counsel take a full review of this events.
Is the expectation that you'll be drafting some, some new sets of guidelines?
For the ones that we're removing, we actually don't believe that we need them. So we don't typically have state forms, however, we do have Richfield forms in some of our guidelines. And so what we did is we took out the ones that were state forms. And then the other guidelines, and like I said, we are a district governed by the rules of achievement and integration. And so what we would suggest or we are thinking, and we want to double-check this with our attorney, is, is that we will remove the specific things in our policy that are already superseded by achievement and integration regulations and requirements. And if for some reason the state changes the rules around achievement and integration, we would want to update our policy anyways at that time, which gets in the way of actually many of the things and honestly many of the pages that were in this policy. Things that don't actually apply to Richfield Public Schools, but do to many of the districts in the states.
Yeah.
Could you share the background of the elimination about for children of employees' priorities?
Um...
That is...
It was probably in the pre, in the all-day, was it in the all-day kindergarten section?
Yeah.
That was where that was, that was a- That was where that was, that was very specifically put in as an historical piece when we started all-day kindergarten, I believe in, was that 2008? I think it was 2008, was when Lauren was in kindergarten. When were Lauren and Emily in kindergarten? That would have been the year that we did it.
Recent grad?
Yeah, so I think that that was a...
They graduated in 19.
Yeah, that was a very specific piece.
My space is something, you know, eight, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
But I mean, is there a priority, is there any priority for employees' children at all, or not?
At present, we accept all students, so we do not have priority. And short of a, at present, short of a board action, and this is one of the things we talked about reflecting on, short of a board action, we take all open enrollments also.
Right, so I'm just saying, because this is being deleted in a time where we do have a lot of space and declining enrollment. But I don't know about the future, if it's going to become important to include it. And I speak as a teacher in a district where we do have that opportunity to put our children in our school so that we can, you know, commute and whatnot, so.
I am open to...
But it may not be only kindergarten, because like where I am is every, you know, K-12, so.
It sounds like the initial intent of it here was when all-day kindergarten was such a kind of a need for...
Right, relative to...
Right, and so that's why it was very specific to that. I think it's interesting to know that in Minneapolis, it is, which also is a district with enrollment that is, you know, not what it once was, at least, that that is something that is in place.
I think that, I mean, yeah, I mean, in general, there's, there are pieces in the policy that allow for some opportunities that we've never set. So for instance, we've never chosen to set a board-approved cap, for example. And so that is always present, and we would presumably be depending upon our monitoring and our understanding, because obviously we know we're going to be monitoring enrollment. We're certainly not going to stop doing that. And so presumably, we would be able to have some sense if we're starting to approach a point where our buildings are actually tight in our class. And I think we do articulate that maintaining class size is a value. So presumably, on the basis of monitoring space and facilities and monitoring class size, we should have, as a board, future boards should have some capacity to have a heads-up if they need to start entertaining that.
I mean, there were a few things, I know you'd mentioned, that there would be an update, like there's references to the deleted guidelines in a couple of places. Just the, the one thing that's in here that was new to me, I guess I'd forgotten, the opportunity to, if an open-enroling student was an open-enroling, misses too many classes or absent too many times, we can uninvite them. I guess, how often is that been invoked?
That is actually invoked on a yearly basis, typically between years. We have not typically uninvited people, and uninvited is, we'll say, not the gentle, what I would say, successful way to describe that. What we do is we analyze students who are open-enrolling, and one of the theories of open enrollment is you are choosing to go to a school that you're able to attend. And so the general rules are if a student, and I believe our line was around 85% attendance, and had been referred to the county for truancy, which means that they were having significant trouble making it to school, those students were not necessarily, have not historically necessarily been allowed to return. And so the theory being, if you go to school closer to your home, some of the transportation issues may not be the same. But we, to the best of my knowledge, we have not, and I'm not sure if that's appropriate, invoked that during the school year. That's something that happens each spring.
So I would just say the other thing is people should continue to send specific questions or things that they are finding in language that they have concerns about as this continues to evolve and be revised.
Absolutely. As always, please email myself and Mary Island, and we will continue to put things in and revise as we bring things forward.
I guess the main reason that I did ask about guidelines is that, looking at 502.1, the language there is specific to Richfield High School. And so obviously, we would be thinking about open enrollment at all of our buildings.
Correct. This is, yes, yes, this is for some reason just the registration requirements for a high school rather than registration requirements for open enrollment across the district.
Yeah.
Correct.
We're going to see how many times we can get Craig to go...
To go up and go back.
Up and back, thinking we're finally getting to the next agenda item.
I'm curious while reading what I have up there. The policy's something interesting.
We might really be ready now. Are we ready? Okay, I think so. So next, we have two sets of change orders related to our facilities work across the district that Mr. Holgy is going to present.
Thank you. The first set of change orders has to do with Richfield High School for change orders 14, 15, 16, and 17. Total net change of these, change orders collectively is $87,467.54 for a variety of electrical and low-voltage modifications, plumbing and mechanical modifications, some changes in the kitchen area due to health department requirements, as well as some additional revisions for the paying and receiving room in the auditorium, and structural changes that way. Total net for the Richfield High School facilities now is set at $36,243,016.54 with those changes included.
I will say that I, for one, do not want to be responsible for failing to fix the existing sewage ejector.
No.
So having said that, I would be happy to move change orders 14, 15, 16, and 17, all in the interest of public council.
I'll second that. They don't want to be responsible.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Mieschek. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the change orders are approved. Next up?
Thanks. Next up, we have Richfield Dual Language School Facility Change Orders 15 and 16. Net change of $27,963.21. Has to do with the ventilation units and some additional metal trim pieces associated with that, as well as the deletion of the rooftop equipment, and then also some additional marker boards and tack board installation at that school. With the $27,963, that increases to $9,229,92.76. So we ask for your approval of those as well.
I'll move the change order as presented.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Mieschek. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the change orders are approved. So we will move into new business, but carry on with facilities-related items.
Thank you. The next request is an authorization for a bid award for Centennial Elementary Schools 2020 Asbestos Abatement Project. Request is that this be awarded to Environmental Plant Services for $157,456. We did open bids on Tuesday, February 11th, had eight respondents to it, ranged from the $157,456 up to $248,960. This recommendation is coming forward with recommendations from IEA, our environmental consultant, as well as ICS.
Thank you.
I will move the item as presented.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the bid award is approved.
Thanks. And the next item is a bid award for the Richfield Middle School Asbestos Abatement for 2020. That request is to award it to Envirobait Inc. for $218,700. This project, we opened bids on February 18th, had six bid respondents with a range from the $218,700 up to $389,580. So that's that most responsible.
Thank you.
I will, then we approve the asbestos abatement change order at our school.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and that bid award also is approved. Next, we have our annual budget revision process for the current 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you. So Director Finance Jim Gilligan and our team have been taking a look at our current budget, updated the current budget revenue specifically tied in with what we know now about our enrollment for the current year, as well as fine-tuning some of our special education projections as well.
Thanks. Need your help with that, I can't... Oh, got it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Takes a while, if you're...
I was gonna say, that's a lot of pages that we're looking through.
There we go. Okay, sorry about that. So taking a look at where we are at with our current revenue projections based on our updated enrollment. If you remember, we had some increase in enrollment from what we had originally projected. We also have a chance to take a look at where our current staff is. Now that we know what their salary, staff and length placement is, what their benefit selection is, we have the opportunity to update that information as well, as well as new information as we kind of dig deeper into that budget. This has a net revenue increase of $941,744 in the general fund, increasing us from $66,643,000 up to $67,584,000 of revenue. And then also a expected reduction in our expenditures of $418,346 from $66,412,000 down to $65,994,000. That revenue projection, as I said, really had to do with the enrollment increases as well as special education and tuition from other schools, and who's going to other schools is one of the things that really has a lot of ebbs and flows and highs and lows, depending on individual students that are enrolling into Richfield or individual students enrolling out of the districts, and what the cost of those special education student services are. So that's something that we've been watching carefully. Feel like with our current fund balance, we can make some better projections that way and get a little bit closer into that area and tighten that up, as well as have seen a little bit more consistency, knock on wood, and also have seen some other opportunities that way. So some of that, and the way, the reason special education tuition falls into that is because it all goes into that special education funding from the state, and they right-size that funding for districts versus us actually doing tuition billing out to other school districts or other school districts tuition billing into us. With the expenditures, again, it was that right-sizing with our current staff, updated staffing, as well as reductions in some supply budgets, which was in that special education category as well. In a net positive for the district, we're seeing that with those changes, we have a net benefit to the district of $1,360,000 with the additional revenue and the reduced expenditures collectively, resulting in what's projected to be a general fund balance of $1,590, or an increase in our general fund balance of $1,590,000 for, between fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20. Just to move over and highlight a couple of pieces where you see this. Really, these are the budget documents that we took a look at last spring and June. So this, correct, all that information, you can take a look at the adopted budget, as well as the revised budget and those individual changes. Net impact really is sitting in those lower lines and highlight those same amounts that we talked about, and really is tied with that right sizing. There's a whole bunch of different ways to take a look at this within the budget that is detailed in with that. I am available for any questions, as is Jim Gilligan, but otherwise, we just ask for your authorization in those areas.
Thank you. Questions? Just giving good processing time. These are very small...
I'll move that we accept the revised budget.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Malik. Any discussion? Oh, just add a comment, how nice it is to get this regularly so we're, I feel, always updated. It's very nice.
And we've been doing the monthly updates that just provides the information. This is, I think, the earliest that we've actually moved this request for the revised budget. And kudos to Jim and his team for really kind of bringing that information and kind of pushing to update that. It helps us move into the budgeting season for next year with a lot more confidence in where our actual numbers are going to be showing up. And so it's something that we've been working on as a team to kind of move that up in the process. And it's a great time to be taking...
And the regular updates build our confidence and all it too, so excellent work. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the budget provisions are approved. And again, thanks to Jim and Craig for your workups. We appreciate it.
Yep.
So next, we have first read of two existing board policies. First is Board Policy 612 on Curriculum Development.
Right, so these are two paperwork significant policies. And so just as a reminder, these are first reads, and these are just to refamiliarize ourselves with the policies, and then also see some of the updates that have come with the Minnesota School Boards Association recommended changes that go with statute. So this first policy, 612, is curriculum development and continuous improvement in terms of how we are changing. And so this talks about the process by which we go on a curriculum review cycle, and then it gets down into the details of a flow chart of what that looks like in the decision-making process, and also how we are communicating through DCAK and some of those larger conversations. You'll see with the redline copy that there are some pretty significant changes and updates that have happened, most recently in 2019. And so you are going to see some pretty significant changes from Board Policy Read Number One and Guidelines to Board Policy Number Two and Guidelines. And we also have added into here something that isn't a board-specific flow chart, but this is the flow chart that we have been using to sort of help us through with that process, and some of the internal documents that we have been using, because we also wanted those up for the board's familiarity. And so just as a reminder, first read for familiarity, and then please feel free to give comments or send any to us, so that we will work those into Read Number Two as we bring this up to statutory regulations.
Thank you. Any comments or questions while we're here, knowing that much more is to come on this one?
I will say that one thing that I noticed and appreciated was the degree of clarity on process that really lays out sort of the roles and responsibilities of any number of individuals and/or groups in the kind of change events. I think you might benefit from that in other areas too, as model.
All right, bringing us to the extremely long 404, Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. And this policy has to do with the processes by which we may choose to alcohol and drug test staff or employees of our district. A lot of this is actually driven by federal mandates, and so things like random testing of school bus drivers or transportation folk, those are things that we are required to, and we document and we report back from a compliance perspective, and also situations where we may choose to invoke this for other folk. And so again, most of this is driven, again, by state rules and regulations. And so there is a lot to read through. And so if you have anything over the next period of time in this nearly 75 pages, give or take, of this particular policy and board guidelines, along with the MSBA work, so get those to us also.
I just want to comment from understanding so much of it is driven by, by the federal law regarding for commercial drivers and also state law and employment law. I wonder why, in this specific instance, we would, we would try to put our own thumbprint on it as opposed to taking the, what is likely tried and true MSBA model policy as close as we could. It just seems like going, going away from that would invite opportunities for us to be out of step with what the common legal practices. No, I mean, we've seen other model policies where there are options within it, and so we should read it, make sure we know which option we like if that presents itself. But this doesn't seem like one where we want to stick our necks out too far.
And our practices are definitely aligned in the same way, so yes.
Okay, so more to come on that one as well. And then the last sort of action item before we get to donations made to the district is a bid award for re-roofing at Richfield High School.
Thank you, and Dan Nutsinger, Director of Facilities, and Ryan Trento, our new roofing partner, have been extremely patient tonight, so I appreciate that. So we, as we indicated earlier, when we authored... So we, as we indicated earlier, when we authorize the bid, authorize seeking bids for the roofing, this is a project that we're looking at for the summer. We've partnered with Tremco this year on taking a look at our projects and priorities and needs. This is one that aligns well with our construction project here at the high school. We've coordinated with ICS and the team here that's going through the rest of the construction on this re-roofing project, and feel like there's an immediate need to help support this at that time. The recommendation here is to award the bid to McDowell Company at Wade Park in the amount of $329,700. There was a lower base bid that was received by Flynn Midwest for $380,356, but the McDowell Company project also had a deduct alternate that was requested as part of the bid, having to do specifically with timing and scheduling. So whether there's a spring start or a fall finish, providing some time for competitiveness because there are a number of roofing projects, roofing projects that are already out for bid in other districts and in other areas, and so that allowed for a $64,000 deduction. For the McDowell Company, we still anticipate that that will be starting in August and finishing early September. We have had other construction projects going on and have coordinated with ICS as far as the location of that, really not impacting our operations at that point, and we're hopeful that much of the work will actually be completed at the end of August. So with that, we're requesting the award for $329,700 to McDowell Companies at Wade Park be authorized by the board tonight.
Questions?
Craig, just to clarify, the deduction, the alternate is just if we can meet timing that they, like, if they have a preference or they're available now or later, and the price is more advantageous if we can meet, if we're flexible?
Yep. So there's, it was a specific spring or fall, and I am going to look for my clarification on this side. The project in the deduct had a completion date of the end of October, so they have that window of time to finish through the end of October versus a spring start to that project that would be finished during the summer.
I think a follow-up question, and I will admit that this is not a natural area of expertise for me. What happens to that deduction rate if there are factors outside of our control that actually affect when it could be started or completed?
I, well, I'm gonna look this one.
It might be a totally stupid question.
The 904.00 is allowing us.
You might just try to say that.
So this allows the company to delay that start time versus having, the original was for a spring start.
Right.
So this basically pushes that project back and allows for that later start. What we, we had a project, for example, a different roofing project here that because of weather wasn't able to be completed. At that time, we go through and negotiate, are there, really, they have that responsibility to complete it by the end of October, that's their accountability. If there's weather or certain circumstances, we end up negotiating with that provider on what the options are, what they need to do to finish it, if we push it off to a different season or not. But we did part of the project at the high school and then pushed the other part of the project to this following summer and negotiated if there are any rate changes associated with it with this project. We don't anticipate that happening. Their bid is for that project change orders happen, and those are the sorts of things that would be, how that would be resolved.
I will retract my statement that it was a stupid question, because thank you for calling me out on that. And let me rephrase it to maybe what I really mean, which is, are there, is there any way that we might not get this deduction and therefore we are not actually doing the lowest responsible bid here?
I'm watching that like this.
It's a time to be busy and all, so yeah.
No.
Thank you. I feel like it's important to understand how that works, given the calculus here.
So technically, what you're accepting is the bid award with alternate number one included in that.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say it's very reassuring to have you here. Your faces, I can see you know what is happening even though I'm not really my spouse. But you're very reassuring, thank you.
So thanks especially for sticking with us for two hours to get here. Okay. Any further questions or comments?
On that note, I would move approval of the bid award for Richfield High School re-roofing.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the bid award is approved. So lastly, we move to donations made to the district.
All right, the Sunshine Fund received donations of $35 through Give Minnesota from the following people. Michelle Burnside, $25, Lisa Ferrera, $10. Richfield High School Band Department was awarded $8 for Dewar's volunteer grant in the amount of $500 on behalf of Marsh &amp; McLennan Companies, Inc. And Richfield Dual Language School received a donation of school supplies and branded backpacks for our students from Sean Anderson. Thank you to Sean Anderson, Marsh &amp; McLennan Companies, and Lisa Ferrera, and Michelle Burnside.
I will move that we accept these donations with gratitude.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Mechek. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the donations are accepted with gratitude. We move into advanced planning, beginning with any legislative updates.
So just a quick update and an invitation to anyone who wishes to have their voice be heard. I was notified just earlier today that the House Education Policy Committee is going to be hearing a bill which is intended to allow our neighbors in Bloomington to innovate with using ACT as an alternative to the MCA. And we have an opportunity to send out some emails if we so wish to support that with the members of that committee. I will be doing so, and I would invite any of y'all who want to check in with me about those details after the meeting. You want to weigh in as well?
Couple of very brief updates. AMSD on Friday. We have Supreme Court Justice Alan Page and Director of the Fed Dr. Neil Cashgard will be presenting on their work regarding proposed constitutional amendment. And then I will be also participating on a panel presenting to the entire House of Legislators in the state of Minnesota on Friday, with a panel of other superintendents talking about some of the things that we're doing to provide equity and opportunity to all of our students. So we're be honored to be part of that group.
Yep, we'll bring back notes from AMSD in our next meeting.
Next, we have time for any information and/or questions members of the board would like to share with each other. Seeing none. Quickly, we'll just share our second meeting of March will be on Monday, the 16th, and as mentioned previously, we'll start with public comment. First meeting of April will be on Monday, April 6th, and begin with the presentation from the Richfield Dual Language School. Any items that board members would like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda?
Given the excitement of the news, I know Superintendent had sent out information about our, you know, what we, our crisis response in the event of something, you know, if something really strange happened in the world, like, like the COVID-19 outbreak. Normally, we probably shrug at the, you know, we do it every flu season and we shrug, but at the same time, there are countries, at least where there, in areas of countries where they are shutting down school districts. And so any information you have just to, just to remind us what our plan is and put us at ease. You don't have to give it to us now, but I was reminded, and thank you for the reminder of that we do have a policy on, you know, crisis response and, and how we would go about that. So it's a great start, and hopefully in two weeks, we won't need to hear any more.
Absolutely. So we do have a crisis response plan. We do train all our administrators, and we do partner with the Bloomington Public Health and also the State Department of Health, and there is a lot of coordination coming from the Commissioner of Education and also actually the Governor's Office talking about what to do in terms of schools and doing some proactive planning. And so we are currently on weekly calls and perhaps even more often to, to make sure that we are on top of things and making decisions, to make sure that we're following those plans.
As a healthcare provider, I'll just stress that the, the critical thing here for the public is, don't panic. You really don't, you really don't need to panic.
You sound like the surgeon general.
Yep.
And they wash your hands.
Wash your hands, cover your cough.
Cover your cough.
Have tea and honey.
And if you feel sick, stay home.
And if you feel sick, stay home. I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that is, I mean, you know, as a, as a district and as employers, I think, honoring, honoring the common sense of people to not spread the illness is the best thing.
And medical professionals, just need to, medical professionals. So thank you. We're glad you're here with us. All right, our final item of business on the agenda is to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Paulus, second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the meeting is adjourned at 9:03 PM.